Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is Independent School District 832, regular school board meeting of the Madam Edi School District. And today is Thursday, September 21st and it's seven o'clock PM. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, every people.
Pull up the agenda. Do I have a motion? Moved by Director Domon. Seconded by Director Peterson. Any discussion? Director Payne. At the very end. H. So we have a motion to add H MSBA under Action Items Number 11. Do I have a second?
Moved. Second.
By Director Donna. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Now, we need to vote on the underlying motion of the agenda as amended. It's already on the table, so any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda. Motion. Moved by Director Domon. Second. By Director Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, presentations and recognition.
Okay, we have Ms. Gillen, and the podium is yours.
All right, good evening, board members. Thanks for this opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Carrie Gillen, and I am the Building Associate Principal at the high school. I'm here on behalf of Justin Han, our principal, and our Activities Director, Erin Forsyth, as well. Tonight, we'd like to honor one of our staff members, Ms. Annie Doll. And... I think? No, Dennis? Nope. Perfect. Annie has been in the district for five years. She's had several roles over that time. She was a COVID coordinator back in the day, helping to support students academically. Last year, she even taught middle school facts, and so a lot of patience and perseverance with helping some middle schoolers learn how to sew. And that's, and she did it with grace and a little bit of humor as well, too. And then this year, currently at the high school, she is teaching Spanish I. And I'm excited to say that she has reinvigorated our business program as well, too. She's our yearbook advisor and does a wonderful job, and we'll get to meet some of her yards here tonight that I've invited. And I'm also excited to let you know that we are starting DECA, and Annie has stepped up to be our DECA advisor at the high school as well, too. So she's got a lot going on, and we're very grateful for her work, which makes her an easy choice for this recognition. Dennis, if you want to advance the slide there. Picture of Annie in action. This is her classroom at the high school. You can see she has just a wonderful space for the students. Everything from top-of-the-line MacBook computers to just spaces that are very welcoming. And kids really, I think, enjoy being in her room. And Dennis, if you want to go to the next slide. Really, Annie's impact and what we'd like to share with you, you know, across the board. She makes students feel cared for and welcome in her classroom. I don't think there is a student that doesn't feel valued when they're in there. She builds really strong relationships with the students, which you'll hear here in a moment. Her classroom is run kind of like a business. It's incredible to see, especially the yearbook in action. There's always movement, there's always plans and roles, and so she really empowers the students to do their own work, have student agency, and really take pride in what they do. She helps students to pursue their passions, explore career opportunities. She's done a lot with her career in tech ed, made a lot of community partnerships as well, too, just in the short time that she's worked on that business pathway. And she's future-forward, so we enjoy having conversations about future planning with her. We're in the works of talking about a school store at the high school and bringing back, like I said, the DECA program and some business aspects for our community as well, too. So I am very grateful for the work, and I'm going to turn it over to the yards to, so they can share their thoughts as well.
Hi, guys. I'm Tori. I have a little, we wrote a little something, our other yearbook editors, so just gonna read a little bit. So as you guys know, there is no teacher quite like Ms. Doll. Like a ray of sunshine, she radiates positivity throughout the classroom. The moment you enter her room, you're filled with excitement and energy. She always knows how to bring the fun, whether it's her funny. How do you say that word again? And dotes, and or hilarious celebrations, like roller coaster rides or Texas lassos. And while she is amazing, in the best of circumstances, she is also a leader in some of the, in some of the toughest moments. Whether it's technical problems, a stressful workload, or even finding the right hotel, she can always get us out of a pickle. We know Ms. Doll has faced a lot of adversity and challenges in the last couple of years, but we have never not been astonished by her grace and positivity while going through it all. She carefully balances her home life, two jobs, and herself, all while being there for her students.
When asked our thoughts about Ms. Doll, all of us editors agreed that she is by far our favorite teacher. But more than that, one of our best friends. Coming to yearbook class each day is a thing we look forward to each day, and Ms. Doll is a big part of that. We also agreed that we have never had a teacher more concerned with our academic success and our personal well-being at the same time. She always can tell when something is bothering us, and the first thing she asks us is, how can I help? She considers our workload and stress and helps us to manage it with organization systems, delegating tasks, and always being someone that you can chat to. We can honestly say that having Ms. Doll in our support system has helped us be so successful in our high school careers.
Ms. Doll is both an incredible, hard-working person and one of the genuinely kindest people we have ever met. We can't think of anyone who deserves this award more than her. She will forever be one of the biggest inspirations and role models, and we can only hope to be as fantastic as her when we grow up. So we recognize you and want to say thank you for all your amazing work and dedication to us. Congrats, Ms. Doll, and we love you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're gonna get a photo.
Yeah, we're gonna do one after. Okay. Yep, exactly, so kind of find. You need to be kind of in between shoulders, exactly. I don't think so. We're just gonna have Ms. Doll and Ms. Gillen.
We're still going.
Oh, this year.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, congratulations to Annie Doll. Thank you for being here. And next, we will have our report from our student representative. We have Fatima here, and we are looking forward to having you with us all year. And before you give your report, if you don't mind sharing a little bit about yourself, we would appreciate it.
I'm Fatima, and I'm a senior. I say I'm pretty involved in the high school. I'm a member of Student Leadership Council, MAPSC, National Honor Society, and I love interacting with the community, which is one of the reasons I am on the board, and I'm excited about my role in this position. And now that I'm speaking a little about myself, I'm going to talk about all the amazing things that's happening around at this great school. So in OH, they are building reading stamina with 32nd dance parties. And I talked to one of my younger siblings who's at OH, and she finds it really fun. And I think it's a great way to get kids excited about reading. Moving on to the middle school, the middle school is really focusing in on making sure students have manners and are using them effectively. And personally, I love my planner. I think this is great that they're teaching the middle school students about organization and time management this whole week. And I'm sure a lot of students in the high school can relate, because I see a lot of students with planners. And also, another thing that's happening at the middle school is that they are now having a youth and government club. The youth and government used to be just a high school club, but now it's expanding to the middle school, which is a good idea. I think it's gonna be very impactful. From my peers who are in there, they think that it's a great opportunity for them to interact firsthand with how our government works and to have that experience, especially if they want to go into politics after high school. How about the high school? The first thing that I want to talk about is Senior Sunrise, which is really important to me. I thought it was a really fun opportunity to be able to interact with all of my peers in one space, which I feel like we don't have those experiences that often, being able to connect with people in your grade. So I found that really fun. And another thing that I found really fun and interesting about the start of the year was that when I first walked into the building this year, I saw that the teachers and staff at the high school, they had made signs for us, like, welcome back. And although that's something small, like, I really, like, felt more excited to be back in school because of that. They had one sign with all of these encouraging messages from the teachers, and then they have another one to the class of 2027. So I think that's something that they should continue doing, because it makes me feel happy that you're back in school and makes me feel like you're welcome. And another thing that's going on in the high school is that this week is Pinkout Week. So this whole week, we are trying to raise at least $3,000 to donate to the Randy Shaver Cancer Fund. We started off this week on Monday. How tight-knit our community is, because it's an event that's celebrated all across the four different schools. So I can really tell, like, how close and welcoming the mom and dad community is. And although other neighboring districts have homecoming, I feel like we do a really good job in making sure everyone's a part of it and everyone feels like we're just one big family. So at the elementary school, there are gonna be high school students visiting them during recess. This is our second year of doing this. Last year, I'm pretty sure it worked really well, because my sister, who was a second grader at the time, came home really excited about all of the athletes that she met, how she got to talk to them and get their autograph. And all of the high schoolers that were able to go last year, they were super happy and satisfied with the experience. So this year, SLC decided to bring it back, but we also included a few improvements. The first one is that all sports are represented, unlike last year, which was just all sports. And the second one is that we decided to include bands and theater kids to make sure that all students are represented, and it's not just that. One event that's fairly new, too, at the high school is Power Bowl. Power Bowl is essentially a girls' flag football tournament, where the girls are coached by some of the football players. This is our second year of doing this, and everyone loves it, like the. Much fun with it. It's a great way for SLC to make sure that everyone is bonded in their community and to start off home. That's a little bit of what's happening.
Sure. Welcome. And I understand there's an added incentive for the pinkout. If you raise a certain amount of money, what? So how close are you? What, how much more is needed, you know?
I'm not sure what we're at right now.
Okay. Great. Okay, thank you.
I would also like to pull up Fatima. I'm glad you're here. That was a fabulous report. Very thorough, and I loved how you shared your perspective as well. That's exactly what we're looking for from you throughout the years, to give that student perspective. So thanks for that. Okay, so just we'll go quickly through this around the district. We have some awards to celebrate that I'll share with you, and then also some upcoming events. So this month, since we were here together last time, we welcomed our zeppers back to school. So we have some great pictures here of kids returning. Our youngest zeppers starting school. We had early childhood programs welcoming students back as well. We have some nice pictures there. Also, some pictures. We've talked about it a lot, but now here it is. Wildwood Implementing Letters. Last year, they went through a really intensive professional development around, around letters. And now our OH staff is in the midst of that training, and our Wildwood staff is beginning the implementation. One of the things we had talked about was our signage throughout the district, creating, building, zephyr building signs and posters that promote all students to be kind, compassionate, inclusive. And so this week, we're starting some student focus groups in all of our schools to get in our students' words what they would like to see on those signs, and what are the things that they would like to hear and see that promotes a welcoming environment in our school. So that has begun, and this was something that was identified during the strategic plan process from one of our action teams. So that got started. I don't know if you saw that the US News and World Report was outdated again. So we are, once again, 10th overall. We were last year, too. This time, though, we are sixth in the state when it come, if you remove charter schools, and last year we were seventh. So that was some new, a new update recently, US News and World Report. We have some, we've just learned about some of our merit scholars. And this is the National Merit Program that starts right now. We learn of our commended students and our semifinalists, and then later we hear who our finalists are. We had quite a few students of this class of 2024 that are now being recognized as merit scholars. So congratulations to all of those students. Also, this year, we, there's a familiar name out there on the, on the screen for you. There are also the rewards from the College Board, National African-American Recognition Award, and we have three awardees, and one is sitting here with us. So congratulations to you. That's a, that's a pretty prestigious award, so congratulations. And then finally, just upcoming events, and of course, we heard about homecoming coming up next week. We also have our Safe Routes to School is having a, so on October 4th, and Kate, I might get this wrong, but I think I've got it. October 4th, we're encouraging our middle school and high school students to walk to school. And one of the things we're doing to promote that drop-off for, at St. Andrews, in the St. Andrews lot, and then walk through, over, walk through the upper lot, you know how we have that opportunity. We're encouraging people to come and, for students to meet their friends and walk to school, and for parents to drop by and get, get a cup of coffee on their way through, and they drop off their students at St. Andrews. On October 5th, then there'll be a walking school bus. We did that last year, and we'll be doing that again, and that was a really fun activity. So there's more information there that link, and I'm sure it came out, or it will be coming out soon in our emails. I know it says walking school bus. Does that mean walking or riding? Can bike kids?
Technically, walking, because we're gonna take a walking bus through the neighborhood.
Okay, so you do not want kids biking along, or what?
I would say no.
But encourage them to ride to school. Now, there is, I'm pretty sure that there's a parent who rides with a group of students.
But she rides from the Echo Lake neighborhood, through Kathryn Abbott, and then Dom Bickner and a Warner, too.
So encouraging other families to organize together to ride to school would be another great activity. So thinking about ways that we can promote walking in and riding to school, that's the goal of those two days. MATH has that zephyr get-together, which will be at the Apple Orchard, and so there's been some information out, but we encourage you to, I think there's a limit of the number of people that can join us. So we encourage you to take a look at that, and hopefully you can, can join us and join me. October 29th, we have the Madam Edi Music Faculty Concert, and then Madaridi on the 30th. And that is all I have in the superintendent's report. Board member calendar. Does anyone want to call anything out? Director Payne. This is a report for the community, but I encourage fellow board members, especially newer board members and others, to come and hear what Dr. Echols been up to. That'll be our first one for this school year. Anything else? All right. And we have policies. We have two here that we're bringing forward for a number of readings. Both of these are updated according to new statute. However, we thought it might be worthwhile to have a few readings for the community before we approve them. They are consistent with our practice. They really, I'll say, in particular, the tobacco-free environment policy we bring to you regularly as it's updated with new, different tobacco devices. And so, so that's really what is happening there. The drug-free, drug-free workplace, drug-free zone updates, there are updates related to the cannabis law. So again, nothing that changes practice, but it does have some updates in terms of language from recent statute changes. So I'm just bringing, I'm just reminding you that there, we'll bring it for a few readings, and if you have any questions or anything you'd like to talk more about, letting me know ahead of time would be great, but we can talk about it now, too. I just hadn't heard. And again, these have been reviewed by the policy committee and brought to you one time or another time, just for review during this study session.
Action items. Approval of donations and grants for August totaling $8,776.57. Do I have a motion? Moved by Director Regan, seconded by Director Domon. Discussion. All donations and grants are greatly appreciated. The use of these funds will be to further the mission of the school district and are used in accordance with the wishes of the donor. All those in favor, please say aye. Next, approval of preliminary 2023 pay, 2024 levy certification. Our Director of Finance.
Our new director. First presentation.
I'll try, I'll try not to. Is this on? I think this is on. Okay, thank you. You know what? Oh, yes, that would be great, great. Yeah, that's a, Stacy, that's a mouthful, right? I always have to say that, you know, to keep it straight, you know, we're talking about a pay 24, so residents pay that in 2024 for the 2024, 25 fiscal year. So that's, that's what this is, and this is preliminary in that, I know some of you, this is old hat, maybe newer for some, some of the rest of you, but there, this is just preliminary. These numbers are changing constantly right now. The MDE is doing updates on this levy. The numbers do change. I saw the, we had an update, I think it was on Tuesday night, and so from Friday, a Friday update to a Tuesday update caused about a six-figure change in the levy. And so that's just as the MDE gets the information in, and they go in and adjust different things. So, so you'll have a chance, go through this information, you'll have a chance to actually approve a levy that's, that's more accurate in December. You'll have a truth and taxation hearing, and then you'll approve a levy at that point, a final approval. So this is just, again, just preliminary. But as we go through, let's see here, give this a shot. Okay. So the certification timeline, and this is set by the state. So school boards are proposing, are certifying the proposed property tax levy by October 2nd, and then we report that to the, to the county. And then, like I said, deadline for school districts is December 28th. So you'll, you've got it, we've got a meeting on December, I believe, 7th. It's in this document here. And so you'll have, you'll have a truth and taxation hearing, and then your board meeting, and then at that point, you'll approve the final levy. A couple of different types of levies that the school district has. So of course, you're all familiar with the voter-approved levies, operating referendums. So anything from an operating referendum to just, actually just that, operate the district, to capital projects, which can include technology, which we have, then build an improvement, construction bonds. You're familiar with those as well. So those are the ones that are voter-approved. And then the state allows us to buy a law, have, there are other levies in there. So one of the, one of the ones that you're very. And then the state allows us to buy a law, have, there are other levies in there. So one of the, one of the ones that you're very familiar with is probably the long-term facilities maintenance. And so that one brings in dollars for the district to do capital improvements, indoor air quality and those types of things. So those are kind of, those are really those discretionary things for districts, but most districts levy for those. And if you have any questions as I go, please feel free to ask. So a comparison of last year's, the final pay 23 to the proposed pay 24, we've got some, we've got some ups and downs in it. And again, these, I, I can guarantee you one thing. The numbers are going to continue to change getting to the final levy approval. But right now, the general fund is down about 154,000. Community education is down about 101,000. I'll talk a little bit more about that one. Some of the debt services up, again, that's a, that's a function of the, your payable, your debt schedules, your required payments there. So in the end, we're down, or we're actually up, the levy's up about 190,000. So not a huge amount. Actually, actually pretty good. And we'll go through and look at some sample tax impact calculations as well. So, you know, some of the things that, that are going to make those numbers change. So one of the big ones is enrollment updates. So this is based on estimates of, of enrollment right now. And so as we report to the state through our Mars reporting system for student data, that, those numbers are going to impact the levy. So when we get to the final in October, or in December, rather, that's going to change. We look at the other, other adjustments that happen, I go back to, in some cases up to three years back. And they're adjusting data, they're adjusting information, they're adjusting the levy for things that have happened or not happened based on prior year's expenditures. So one of those examples is in, in school age care and a community service fund. We had a reduction of 52,000. And that was really due to this, there was some budgeting. There was an idea that some programmatic expenditures were going to happen. They didn't quite, they didn't actually happen to the, to the amount that was levied. So we can't levy for something that we, we didn't incur. So that becomes an adjustment and and there's a lot of adjustments. Actually, I go back on that general ed levy that, that happened, you know, two years, two years prior as well. So there's a lot of adjustments. The levy documents about 39 pages of formulas and adjustments. And so what you're seeing here is a very highly summarized presentation. So when we look at property tax impact, one way it is to set this at a, at a point, and let's just assume in this example, there's no market change. So no market increase, no increase in valuation of proper residential properties in the district. So when we look at that, going down to the, kind of the bottom three rows down there. And I'll go all the way to the right to make this quick, but if we don't have any change in market value, which probably will not happen, we'd be going down 4% as far as tax change. So then we'll go to the next page. If we look at a market value increase, the county has estimated a market value increase for the school district at 2.2%. So, and again, that's an estimate. These numbers are going to change. I just want to reiterate that. These are not final. When we look, actually, incidentally, I looked at some other market values. I think ours are going up less than any, anybody else's. There are some that are going up 8%. So that's, I think, you know, it's, it's okay. And I, I don't know all those factors yet, because I'm not as familiar with the district yet. But as I go through, I'll be looking at some of those things as the why that is. But if we look at that, plug that 2.2% in, which is the county's estimate, the estimated tax change goes down almost 2%. So all the way on that right-hand column goes on one to 1.8, roughly 1.8%. So going in, again, we'll hope those numbers hold, but they may change. So tonight, what we're asking is so to, for you to approve the preliminary levy. And we, I guess, I've always loved this nomenclature of maximum levy. But there is a reason. And the reason is because, is because these numbers are not final. So you wouldn't want to choose a dollar amount, let, and choose that as your amount and then find out that you've shortchanged yourself. So, but you'll, you'll have that opportunity to levy that exact amount going, going into December. And so we, so it, I don't know a school district that doesn't set that levy, the preliminary levy to the maximum. So I'm sure there might be one out there that doesn't for various reasons, but that would be highly unusual. So that's, that's it. And I guess if you have any questions. Okay. Oh, yes. Thank you. There is. Oh, correct that.
Be clear when it is.
Just trying to confuse people.
Yeah. Uh, thank you. Does, are there any questions? I thought that was a great explanation. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
And a motion.
So moved.
By Director Donna. By Director Doman. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Host, motion carries. Next, Superintendent Goals.
So the goals that we've attached here, you had given some feedback regarding these goals. I made some wording changes. I also put a timeline on the right. You'll see a PR. What I intended to do there was one board member suggested that I indicate that we'll be giving a progress report, even if the goal is, you know, due at the end of the year, you'll still get a progress report. And so just to, to make sure that it was clear in here, the PR is representing progress report. So that, so I did do some wording changes. I put the timeline. There was one in particular at the end that Director Regan, you had mentioned that last one with expanding the strategic plan objectives. And a couple of you actually also chimed in about wanting to be a little more visionary with some of this as well. And so that one is intended to show, you know, a little more specific about what we think we should be exploring with regard to developing kind of a learner profile at each grade level tied to the strategic plan and what it is we're after. So when we talked about the different ways that we measure success for students, the intent here is to be doing some exploration work and some study regarding that and how it is. So I hope that that's a little bit clearer there. But again, this year would be more of a learn from other districts and do some reading regarding what it is that we can measure and show, demonstrate for students. So those are the changes I made based on our discussion.
So I just want to state again, as I did in the study session, that I think we've put too many things in this document that we should only have three to five goals or outcomes. And we've got a lot more here. And so I feel like we're micromanaging a little bit more than we need to. And that it would serve us in terms of our time and our work and thinking about the evaluation process and things to really focus in on three to five of these that are the biggest, most strategic ones. And when I think about that, I think about the literacy roadmap is really big and important. These other things are things that are going to happen. But they're not as strategic in the thinking. And then the other one in terms of looking at trust and partnership is thinking about establishing the process for gathering student input. Is that something that's more strategic thinking wise? And then finally, the one that Superintendent Duffin just talked about would be the three I would hope we would focus on either in the approval process now or in the evaluation process when we do that at, at a later point. I just want to reiterate that from the previous meeting, because I think we're creating a lot of extra work for ourselves and for our superintendent, when there's lots of other work that needs to be done. But those three goals to me are the biggest, most important things that we need to be reported out on, on a regular basis. All the other information will still come to us, I feel like, through the monthly superintendent's reports and things like that. So.
Um, the last, I would still like to reword. Not wordsmith, but add maybe under what success looks like. In the last box of trust and partnership, we've talked at length for all of months and months and months, and we've brought in community events. But this one to me specifically says all stakeholders are welcome to engage and partner in, in the Zephyr community. And if that means in your school, the ways to engage, I know I've been repeatedly dismissed on this, but they're gone. And so if something can be written, I'm specifically talking about elementary school here, Wildwood. Those first years you send your kid off to school and the things are gone that welcomed you in when you send your five-year-old off to school to build that community with. Five years later, you can see a parent around town and say, oh, I think I met you at uh, welcome to school night, or I'm sorry, that's still here. We met at that day you could bring someone to school. Mystery reader, anything that just gets someone in the classroom. So I just find it interesting. It says all stakeholders are welcome to engage and partner. But most of the things I think for that aren't, have been eliminated.
So, so it sounds like under the outcome, you want to also see, I mean, I'm, don't mean to paraph, I'm kind, I am paraphrasing here. Engagement opportunities within the classroom for families.
I know my, I'm a broken record, but I just don't know why they're gone.
I, I, no, I know you're, I, I don't see you as a broken record. I see you as advocating for, for what you want to, you want to see things in the classroom in particular elementary. I've heard you. I, it's not that you're a broken record and, and I'm sorry you feel dismissed. I think I would just suggest that there are ways that our teachers and principals, I, I've communicated that they see it as a goal for themselves too. It just may look different from year to year. What that, what that looks like may, may look different. And so I'm not. So we can, we can write that down. I think I'd want to just suggest that the ways in which our teachers and principals organize their year, organize themselves to include parents may look different than what you're talking about. And I wouldn't want you to, I'm sorry you feel dismissed, and I wouldn't want you to feel like you're not heard if it doesn't look the same way. But it, it may not, because our teachers are the experts in their classroom. So I don't, I don't want to, I'd be, I'd be concerned about, about that, I guess. Is that it needs to look the same way that it always has. It may look different. But I hear you. And I know our principals and teachers are working to do more of that outreach. I saw some things go out from our elementaries to start with about inviting parents in, for example, to eat lunch. I just saw that go out this, this week. So anyway, I just want to offer that.
So do you feel like family engagement is open and just and then it, it essentially then allows for some kind of
I could report in on the ways in which families
That's what I think would be helpful. Is that?
Yeah. And, and I just had to say it one more time. And I know at our study session, that isn't recorded, you did, did say, just wait till you see. I know the schools have stuff planned. So I did remember you said that.
Okay. I, I feel like it started, I mean, I saw it just this week, I think, the, the invitation and I don't, oh, I think it was at OH I saw like when, when it was the teachers, for example, have their lunches. So I think that just came out today to help families plan.
Um, I guess I would just add that I would rather see it as open-ended as possible and not specific, anything specific or events or things like that. I think that I guess I'm, I'm going to put my trust in Superintendent Duffin and the principals of what this looks like. And again, these are the superintendent goals, but to me, the result statement of all stakeholders are welcome and engaged to partner in the Zephyr community. That's the most important part to me that maybe is something that we didn't have in there previously. So I like it as it is. Sorry.
Ma'am Chair, and Superintendent Duffin, and if board members or community members or family members have specific ideas, what's the best form, best way to communicate that or raise those ideas with, with yourself?
Are the ones that are going to be, I mean, for those specific ideas, like in the classroom, it really is the teachers and the principal. They'll do it differently by grade level. They might, again, they may have different ideas.
So I think, um, I think it is worth pointing out that the main overall headlines of the goals are agency, developing agency, defining what it means, having a baseline data that we're able to see our progress. And then trust and partnership. Value greatly. We want our families and our community to know that we value them as a partner in everything we're doing and how that supports our students and their academic goals and their social emotional learning. And then excellence and obviously ensuring that we are helping our students achieve what they, what they are capable of and what they're, and finding their passions and helping them on that path. So I, I'm very pleased with the goals that have come out about and I really appreciate all the effort you put into helping us get our hands around those big picture ideas.
Brief comment. You know, I really like the goals Superintendent Duffin put together. I think you put a lot of thought into this. You listened to the direction the community gave us when the strategic plan was put together. And you prioritize. I think a lot of the foundational elements, you know, I think the literacy prioritization is clear and evident. And so I would just like to comment that I think this is a very big step in the right direction. Not that the previous goals were bad or good, they were different. And I, I do really like the fact that these are ambitious goals that we're going to go after. And when we achieve them, not if we achieve them, I think, you know, as a collective group, we absolutely will achieve them. The district is going to be much stronger and better for it. So thank you for putting effort into it.
So we need to move forward with a vote. I'm trying to think of how to do that with the added language. So I guess. Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out if we not made a motion. No, I know. That's why I'm struggling with where I'm at the process, because we haven't, we're not even, we haven't made a motion to move it yet. I have a motion by Director Payne.
Second.
Seconded by Director Donna. Any discussion? We're going to move forward as they are. And no other questions if, or comments. If anyone, or all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Now. Uh, school board goals. Where I'm starting. Okay. So everyone has seen these, obviously. Our goals somewhat mirror those of the superintendent. We will obviously have the headline of excellence, trust and partnership. And then we also have more focused on operational type issues. I, I can walk through these or I, I, I thought I would just probably do a kind of a big picture, but if anyone has anything they want to go into in more detail, then jump in. But I do think that, as I said, in the comments about superintendent, the superintendent's goals, the priority that we've placed on our academics and ensuring that we are measuring, getting, getting a good understanding of data, I think is a really good goal for this board. I know we've been trying to wrap our heads around how to, how do you capture that for? how do you capture that for um, students? When there's so many different levels at which uh, that kind of data is measured. And I think um, I think we're on a good path to getting to a much better place of understanding it and knowing and feeling confident that we uh, know the progress that's being made. And also identifying the areas of growth. I think we've um, done a really good job in finding a balance there. I also want to point out trust and partnership. Uh, we've really as we saw last year, have been really good in moving forward with our engagement opportunities for our community. And I see that continuing. I did keep in the language of having at least one event that will cover the role of the school board. Um, I think we all agreed that was really important. And then also um, just the funding that obviously that's um, one of our top priorities is ensuring that um we are wise with the funds of the district to, to get the best use of the dollars for all of our students. So with that, any discussion or should we move to vote?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. One addition. So one board member requested um, engaging a demographic study. Um, I did look, the last time we had done a demographic study was 2015. And uh, the reason for this was to really understand population trends, inform that long-term enrollment, understand open enrollment. Um, and help with facilities and programs decisions. So I did look back, um, we do have uh, a demographic study again from 2015, which I think addressed all of these things um, that we're talking about. I did look into that same um demographer is still doing demographic studies. So I think it would be worthwhile to um, enlist that group again. And um, so that is new, that was not there last time. But uh, I'll just tell you that that's an update and that's uh, we've looked in, I've already looked into it. So if you approve this, I'll just move forward with it.
Director Peterson.
Um, can I add to that Barb or Superintendent? Does that also include? I think we've discussed the right-sized school might be outdated.
Yeah, so I will say that that does not. Um, with the right-sized school study was done by someone truly who was in the graduate program. And so made that their graduate uh, research paper. And that's where we got that from previously. Um, so if it were the case that we wanted to do replicate that study in any way, um, we would have to either find another person working on their um, degree or I'll just say, I think that that was a question that was being asked by the board at the time. And so based on those discussions, this person went and did that study for the district.
I will say I did add a line because I thought we had been talking about this, the study of open enrollment history and status. So it's not the same thing as doing a right-sized study, but that is included because I thought in order to ensure that we are making wise decisions for facilities. Um, it helps us to understand how we got to where we are. Did that cover what you're looking for?
I don't think that's the same, I'm sorry, that's not the, what you've just said is part of the demograph, that is part of the demographic study. That would be different, that's the question.
Different, yeah. I just, it's 10 years old. I'm wondering when you do another one.
Madam Chair, I endorse what Director Peterson was talking about, but I don't think we want to add it here at this moment in time. We can reevaluate it come January because we don't know how available the demographer will be. We might not be able to get, because I think that has to come first. And I think you're thinking further ahead of all of us into the next step. And, and I support that concept and idea as the next step until we know when we can get the demographers in place and that study done, then I think we would do that next. And so maybe at the mid-year, we should revisit this part of the conversation and say, do we want to add this now in the rest of this academic year? Or maybe we don't get to the, to the demographer studies. So we might say, that's next year. But it does need, I would agree with you that it does need to be looked at again, but I'm afraid to put a timeline on it when we don't know when this other report will be available to us because we're relying on experts outside of us.
I was going to share a very similar comment. I, I think the demographic study is very foundational and helpful and maybe propels us to that next goal, whether it's six months or 12 months from now.
I have a motion. By Director Domon.
Second.
Seconded by Director Peterson. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Now we will move to approval of superintendent contract. Do I have a motion? Moved by Director Domon, seconded by Director Payne. Any discussion? Director Peterson.
I really appreciate that the school board goals and the superintendent goals happen to align with my first year on the board and a superintendent contract. It really put a lot of things in perspective for me, priorities, thoughts we all have on what's important for us, for superintendent. I was reluctant to approve this contract. I thought I thought there were many other ways you go about it and years you put on it and uh, money. And so I don't have a question or a comment. I just wanted to say how all these lined up couldn't have been better for learning all of this.
Duffin, for all of the um, years you have served our district and the years moving forward, I think that we are very fortunate to have you here. We're fortunate for your leadership, um, the consistency and stability this will provide for our district and the ability to move forward with a new strategic plan and put that into action. So um, thank you for all of the work done and work upcoming. Thank you.
I'd just like to say I'm excited for the future. I'm excited for you leading us into the future and confident that you'll you'll get us where our goals want, want us to be. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, kind of similar sentiment to everybody else, but I, I was unsure what the process was going to look like, quite frankly, and, and the election was an interesting experience. But I'm very, again, impressed that we're working together and you're working with us to sign up some really ambitious goals. Um, I, I, quite frankly, if we weren't going down that path, I probably would have had some hesitations, but the fact that um, we've again, been able to partner together and, and working towards some really ambitious uh core foundational academic goals, I think is a huge step forward for us. I'm really excited to continue to partner together.
How much uh, you've worked with me and especially this year. And then just through this process of the goals and I'm really happy that we came to an agreement on this.
Um, I do think there's a lot of really good work that's happened in this past year, um, both as a, as a team and um, working together to figure out a way that we're going to all work together, move together. I think this is a really strong board. I think we have a really um, diverse, we have diverse perspectives on this board, which I think really makes us better. Um, and I think our strategic plan really uh, brought together a really diverse group of people who had lots of opinions about what is best for our district. And I think that's what what has made this a much, you know, that's what makes this a, a strong a strong strategic plan and a strong direction for us because it was created by our community with so many different voices involved. So um, I'm excited too. I think there's a lot of great things that have started and um, I think it's just gonna get better. So thank you.
Thank you. We can, we can take our vote. All those in favor? Please say aye.
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 Those opposed? It uh a unanimous, it passes unanimously, is what I was trying to say.
All right.
Thank you. Oh, next. I thought that was done, like such a, okay, now we have policies.
Yeah, so this group of policies we've reviewed as a, the um, policy committee has reviewed. And we did talk about it at the study session briefly. These are policies that really only require one reading because all of them are just complete language changes from statute or updates. They're, they're minimal changes and they do not affect our practice. You have seen these before. And so um, I'm recommending we move these forward. There are a couple others that were in the packet last time during the strategic, uh, during the study session, and we decided to pull those, a couple of them because we are waiting for some clarification of statute language. Or um, board members had some questions and we thought it would be worthwhile to review them one more time. So these were the ones that are simple, can be reviewed with just uh, one reading. And so that is what I'm recommending.
All right, all the, uh, can I get a motion?
So moved.
By Director Peterson. Seconded by Director Domon. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
For meeting calendar.
Oh boy, okay. So Loveless, you may need to help me with what's in this packet right now. Do we have the Monday one or the Thursday one here? The Monday ones, the Monday one that you see, um, so to change our meetings to Monday. Um, the second and fourth would, Mondays would not have worked uh, for all board members. If we look at the first and third Mondays, there are Mondays, there are three of them that we would have to move because they are holidays. So at this point, I think it's reflected that we have the following, we have the Tuesday. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. So um, things to consider in this are one that we'd have to move three of the meetings. They would not line up on a Monday. Secondly, those three, if we move them to a Tuesday, that aligns with city, might have been a city council. And so I just want to offer that um, we typically have not held them on the same day. Um, and so that you know, what, whatever you would like to, like, you know, it's two government agencies holding meetings on the same day. So that would be my one as, that would be a hesitation I have. Um, the other part of this is that we, we excuse me, we would need to wait until July because this is our only meeting room and it is booked. Um, and finally, we have let MAFE know that we're exploring this. We did hear that this would require them to rearrange their calendar as well because they are a Monday night. They're typically a Monday night organization. Um, and so that would affect the MAFE board. And that was the only other group that we, we saw that was a regularly scheduled group on Mondays. So that's what I have for you um, for feedback. There was, however, we do have board members who wouldn't be able to make it here in time on Monday. We could talk about, so I think there's a second version in the wings of a Thursday, staying on Thursday, but starting earlier. That's the other that's the other version that's over, not here at the table, but depending on what you decided here, that was our follow-up. So that's what I have for you.
We've talked about this for years and trying to move it and we always end up in the same spot. It is problematic. Um, when we all ran for election, we need board meetings were on Thursday nights. That's what we signed up for. Moving them, we decided we couldn't move to Tuesdays because I won't work for board members, but now we're talking about moving some to Tuesdays. Right? Because of the Mondays. Um, and so I'm concerned about that.
About that too.
Yep. So that won't work for all board members either. Um, we wanted to, out of respect for families, not go to Wednesday. Right? Because that's a important night religiously for many families in our district. And we are displacing other groups um, in the space and in their schedules as well, where it's been Thursdays for a very long time. And so I really appreciate the idea of investigating this and I love the idea of starting earlier. And so because those two things are now all playing at once and the complexity of the puzzle pieces, I would really like to see the Thursday night earlier start schedule as a real possibility.
Sorry, I'd forgotten the Tuesday problem for a board member.
Although it looks like one of the Tuesdays would be a retreat, so that's not, that's Yeah, but I mean, I'm saying that so I will not think that's a goal. Yeah, I mean, oh, just others. Director Regan.
Um, I would just say that to me, it doesn't, it doesn't impact me personally. I feel a lot like this is a bigger deal to the other groups that this might impact. Um, for example, MAFE, um, that's just one group. Um, I also worry a little bit about um will Mondays impact any sort of attendance of community members? I'm not sure whether that's in person or online. I don't know. I'm not saying it's a, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I think it's great to explore it. Um, it doesn't really matter to me one way or the other. So I'm, I'm going to be here either way. I just worry a little bit about what are we doing to, to other groups? That's really my only concern.
I don't, I, I just don't want to speak, I, what we know is that they would have to change their date. And we know that there are a number of board members who expect a Monday night meeting. I, they, I don't think they pulled their group. I don't think any of that has happened. We just wanted to know an impact without just to give you that feedback as you did. And if you wanted us to explore more, we could. They haven't met since our last meeting. Oh, there's Ms. Loveless over there. That is if we had taken the second and fourth, but we're not doing the second and fourth now. We're talking about the first and third. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know how much of, um, again, we haven't had a MAFE meeting since we had a meeting. So I, it hasn't been something we've asked the whole board. I just wanted to give you the feedback of the impact because that was the only group that we knew of that met on Mondays, so.
Um, are we fresher on a Monday? By Thursday at 10 o'clock, are we all half-dead?
I've already spoken once. I need to defer to Director Regan. Okay, just want to make sure.
I was trying to look for others for you.
I wasn't sure if you were pointing behind.
Yeah, I couldn't tell if he was.
My other concern with the calendar as presented in the board package. Right? It's Thursdays and it's Mondays and it's Tuesday. And so there's no consistency for our community in this calendar in terms of looking at when they need to think about board meetings. That has me concerned as well that we're shifting gears in that way.
So I guess one brief or a couple of brief comments, like one, traditional board work is typically done on a Monday. So I think that would make more sense for us. Two, I know recently it's been Thursday, that hasn't always been the case. If you rewind a clock 30 years, we traditionally run Mondays. And three, I think if we're being strategic about this and pushing it far enough out, that will give everybody their opportunity to adjust as needed. Um, and then I guess fourth would be I still think there's a, a lot of community events that land on Thursdays, especially once winter hits. And it's a shame that we don't get an opportunity to attend that because we're here and Monday nights traditionally are nearly as many events. So that's my two cents.
I guess my only last point on this is that um, the, the thing I do appreciate about our meetings being on Thursday, being on Thursdays, is we are communicated out things in the board packet. And in Superintendent Duffin's notes, board notes, I have a few days ahead of time to review those. Um, so I guess we, I, I would say we would as a board have to put in more effort over the weekend to be ready for a board meeting to make sure that we are versed on the content that we're going to be talking about, discussing and voting. Um, so that would just be an adjustment, I think, for Um, so that would just be an adjustment, I think, for us that when, when something comes out on a Sunday or a Monday, then I have a few days to look at that before Thursday. So that's it. I, I will just offer that if we changed it, I would change the date of my board notes. So that you would have that time, but I appreciate that. It's just I, that's what I would do.
I, I feel like I. I, I struggle with Thursdays sometimes. I've had to do a lot of adjusting um, to make it work with school, with work schedules and kids' schedules and all of that. Um, I can't foresee the future. I, right now Mondays sound really appealing. Um, just to, to ease up on some of that pressure. The thing I don't like are those Tuesdays, but I keep thinking that, um. There could be a way to work, I mean, the one Tuesday, I, I just see us not having a retreat that day and then, um. The other two. Well, I don't know. I mean, I, I, that's what I was trying to figure out if we'd done that in the past or what did we do differently? Because we don't normally have a retreat in September, so it was a little.
Yeah, that was my, that was our attempt to try and get retreats on, because the August retreat, we got the feedback that that was a bad time for it, so that's.
Ah, okay, okay, okay.
That was where that came from.
Um. So I, I really like the idea of switching to Mondays.
Mind us though, if we wanna start earlier, because we have been going late into the evenings, 11 o'clock and later. Thursday would be the option to be able to go earlier, it sounds like.
Well, that would be our, that would, because I, I will, yeah, I don't know about Thursday. Um, I know that Monday earlier didn't work for everybody.
Well, because committee meetings are before the board meeting. So, right, I'm saying that would impact them. I didn't say how, because I don't know what that would look like. But it would impact committee meetings, so it might be doing committees on another night. Um, and being here not one longer evening of a couple nights during the week for board meetings or board work.
I've done this, I've done this wrong before, so stop me mid-sentence, all of you, if I'm doing this wrong. I make a motion to move school board meetings to Mondays? Okay. Well, see.
You mean according to this schedule, because it would.
Yes.
Or in the way.
No, I mean in July.
That's what I was going to say. If, if what it is, um, is that you want to approve that calendar, the way it's. Is that what you're suggesting? Because here's the thing, is that.
So what I've done this before and screwed a lot of things up.
Let's just make it clear what your motion is, but I think so it's.
Are you, do you want this calendar? You like this calendar?
Trying to move us along, it sounds like.
Yes.
Okay. On that, what we've just presented, yes.
Director.
Question.
Calendar as presented causes problems with the committee meetings, which are on that calendar, so I would move that we wrote this down. And consider what we're gonna do with. Um, committee meetings or. Um, because they won't work where they are. Prior to a board, if we have a board member who can't be here to start the board meeting earlier, they can't be here for all those committee meetings. Right? And so now you've eliminated a board member from committee work. By making a change.
So I guess I'm, we have a board member who can't be to any committee meeting.
That's the, that's what, okay, so the Monday meeting schedule and the Tuesday meeting schedule. Monday early does not work and Tuesday does not work at all for one of our members. So I would just say that, and I had forgotten about the Tuesday not working at all. And so again, I'm sorry I would have shared that. Earlier. So.
Well, effectively, the only meeting date that works for board members Thursday. Effectively, for one board member, the only meeting date that works is a Thursday or Friday. But Wednesday doesn't work.
Monday works, but not until seven. And then she's saying that committee meetings.
And those Tuesdays don't work. We would have to pick different. We couldn't, yeah, we'd have, if we were gonna make this change, we'd have to pick a different date for the non-Mond- the Mondays that had come.
Would people want to move forward with omitting the, the committee? As, uh, meetings on there and then once we. Because these meetings aren't changing until July and people will know their committees in January. And we're constantly changing our calendar. Director Payne.
Down and maybe adopt a calendar so that we can get something published. And then return to looking at the change at a later date, once we have all the things ironed out. We know the full board can make it on Thursday nights. We know for some members it's not ideal, but we know we can all be here. We know it's worked. If we go back to that schedule, we can get something passed and put in place in the books. And you're right, we change it all the time, so then we could spend more time looking at what exactly would work. And then alter that calendar at that point in time. Because the changes are for much later. I would hate to approve only part of a year. I, I would think our staff would like to get started on implementing some things. Even if it's only for the first six months, knowing that we're still working on it, but we need something in place. Um, because these dates will come fast and we only meet once a month. So I think it'd be nice to pass tonight. An agenda that we know works for everyone, which would be the Thursday. Um, and continue to have a conversation and know that we can alter it. So I'm going to vote this, no on this motion.
I would like to hear if people, if people feel strongly about Mondays, do you wanna move forward without committee meetings? On the calendar.
I would be fine with that.
I've gotta say again, we would have to also not have those Tuesdays. We've had, if we're not, because we do have a board member cannot make Tuesdays at all.
It, it seems as though, um, we are not, it seems as though maybe this needs to be tabled. I mean, there's a motion on the table, but I mean, I guess, I guess my only option would be to not approve it, I guess, at this point. Because there's conflicts where. Again, it's not about one person, but we are all on the board and so we have to be able to be here. And so I guess tabling not being an option, since there is a motion on the table. Um, it doesn't impact me personally, but I worry about us not all being able to be here.
Well, I, we talked about this at our study session and Mondays were okay for everyone. We did not envision the committee meeting time. So that was not discussed. So. I'd like to make a motion to omit the Tuesdays and the. Committee meetings until. Of the, of the meeting schedule. I just made a motion. To amend it.
That's what I said, what you said.
Well, I apologize. I was saying motion to amend is what I was intending to do. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Domon. Now discussion on the amendment. So we'd have just a rough draft of, we know Thursdays all next year until July and then Mondays for meetings starting at seven. And then the committee meetings and the holidays would have to be, uh, discussed at our next study session. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Uh, roll call? Make a note of it. No, we don't need to roll call. Okay. So motion carries. Amendment, the amendment passes. So now we need to vote on the underlying. Motion as amended. Any other discussion?
Just, can you repeat? I just wanna be clear what we're voting on.
So the, the underlying motion as amended is it will be this calendar minus the committees and the Tuesdays. Because we need to have on the record that we are still meeting next Thursday, next year until July. And then we'll have it on the schedule as Mondays for seven o'clock meeting. So that way people can start to plan in terms of the rooms and that sort of thing. And then at the next study session, we will discuss where there's conflicts. So any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh, MSBA.
So it is that time of year again to, um, propose things to the MSBA delegate assembly. And so for new board members, this is a process for our professional organization to set their legislative agenda. Um, this is, um, something that we often do, we're not required to do. But they ask districts, as you know from all the emails you get from MSBA that you've read, so I don't need to go into too much detail here because you've read all this. Um, that we have the opportunity to propose things that we would like to see, um, the government relations team support, not support, advocate for, et cetera. And so in hearing the conversation around the table about doing things, uh, more visionary at the high school level. And thinking about the things that we would like to change on a strategic plan, um, thinking about the high school schedule work we've been doing and things like that. I've written a resolution to support, um, the things we've been talking about and, and bringing it forward to you today to. Ask us to approve this so we can send it to MSBA, to the delegate assembly. This is not language that is bill language. This is language going to the delegate assembly. Who will then vote on it and then all it does is tells the government relations team that they. This is the stance the organization is taking. So all this does is moves it from here and it can move without the board's approval as well, because I can submit it by myself if needed. Um, to that delegate assembly space. So I tried to make it as broad as possible, um, knowing again that this language is not bill language. It is not anything beyond a concept of what we would like them to work for, for high schools in our state. So it reads, um, be resolved, MSBA urges a legislature to move forward, move toward policies and practices. That allow for high schools to redesign credit learning, credit bearing learning experiences for students within the individual context of each district. The legislation must provide flexibility, resources and support for districts. Um, so pretty much what it says is it would allow high schools, um, to have more flexibility in the way they do credit bearing things. Um, so if it's with the instructional hour piece we've done before. Um, but it allows us to do it with flexibility within our own district, knowing that what we might wanna do would look very different than a larger district or a greater Minnesota district. Um, and then below that, you'll see where I've written some just broad language about why we feel this is a problem. Um, and it's just background information for the resolution. But the important thing is, as we think about our high school students, they're tomorrow's leaders and we need to provide them a space where they've got, um. A different experience than we might have had, because it's time to, to re-envision what we're doing. We know also that MDE is already thinking about this space and will probably be moving some things forward itself. And so we would like to be able to have our professional organization work with them on bill language and not just have to sit back and say. Do what you want, because we don't have a stance. This would give our organization that opportunity to engage in that conversation and, um. Work to have good language put for the support schools in the state. So with that, I'll take any questions people have about it. In the, no.
Um. I usually like to marinate on stuff, but as I read this, this is. This is really exciting. Um, and I appreciate your, your passion and. Your vision with this. Is, would there be an opportunity with this concept for, or would it be your thought going forward to? I'm guessing it's probably embedded here somewhere with the data, but to get input from. The, um. The world that's hiring our future leaders to help us with what we need to prepare them for?
Oh, Director Payne, yes.
Um. So I appreciate that, because that's what drives a lot of this, right? Business leaders are telling us that our graduates are not prepared. Um, and we need to do things differently as part of what drives this. When we put forward exact language of the legislature, sometimes. We lose out because it's too exact and they want different words and then we end up fighting. And so I've tried to write it really broadly and then, um, as we know from our work at the Capitol the past many years. That it is more beneficial to us to move that way. Um, I know. So Business Partnership, they're at the Capitol advocating for changes as well. We've got a number of, of groups in that same space. Um, you know, in our strategic plan, we've got all the space where we want the stakeholders to give us that input. And this, the way it's raised about individual context with each district would allow us that space to do it. And would not, hopefully, if the language is able to carry through all the way to statutory language, which is not our decision, right? We don't take those votes to the Capitol, would allow us that flexibility we need to have those conversations in our district with our stakeholders, with the businesses close to us.
Is this just for our edification or is there action needed in the group?
Yes, we need to take a vote on it tonight if we want to submit it with the support of the school board. Other, I, as Director Payne said, she could submit it as an individual school member, but, um. We have the opportunity to put it forward as a school board. Director Payne.
So for newer board members, we've done this a number of times, pretty much every year. We've put something forward, I think. Um, last year Kelly put a piece together on PSEO that was extremely well received at the delegate assembly. And then there were actual changes made in the PSEO language in statute this last year. So this work is very impactful or can be if the legislature has an appetite for some of these things. And we know oftentimes, um, two of the biggest players at Capitol are MDE and Education Minnesota. And I've been in conversations with both those groups and they are both, both have the appetite for this. So it would just again show our leadership in the state in these spaces, um, that makes a difference for all students in the state of Minnesota.
Got a little bit of background on the delegate assembly process in terms of timing and. When, like when the, when it'll be reviewed.
So the delegate assembly has come out in multiple emails that you've all received, but for our community to know that the delegate assembly is volunteers, so I'm a delegate again. Um, I don't think anyone else on the boards put a name for it, unless I looked at the list. Um, but we meet, um, we get a, a packet of all the resolutions coming forward, so we have time to read it and resonate on it. It goes to MSBA, they do some more background research on it, provide us all the information. We have an overview from the government relations team in November. And then we go for a night and half a day in December. We're going somewhere new this year, um, for the retreat, but the delegates come in from across the entire state. There's. Over a hundred people there, I believe, and we, they are presented, they are discussed and then they are voted. And if they're approved, then they become part of what the government relations team can advocate for, um, by the Capitol. So if this is not passed by us or, well, it does matter for us, because I'll submit it my own. But if it's not passed by a delegate assembly, it might, um, cause issues if the legislature, um, legislators were come to MSBA to say, well, where you stand on this. And they have to say, we don't have a stance.
Oh, Director Regan.
I'd like to make a motion to submit this resolution submitted with support of the school board.
Uh, further discussion. Thank you, Director Payne, for, for bringing this forward. Uh, Director Domon?
Yeah, maybe one quick question. Yeah, maybe one question for Director Payne. I think I really like this. Just one question, though, like, does this potentially open up an opportunity for districts that are really struggling to manipulate the credit bearing process?
I wrote it very broadly, so our team, government relations team with MSBA can work with MDE on that. And so MDE is very much aware of concerns from community, quality of schools, quality of education within our state. This does not change any of the academic standards we have in place. So all districts would still need to meet the same academic standards, but we give that flexibility in the design of the high school. Right now, we don't have the ability to give credits very easily for some things outside the norm, like service learning. And if we wanted students to do a service learning thing and give them credit for it, it's outside the school day, would cause us issues, right? And so I'm trying to write it broad enough, knowing that there are other people in place and other statutes in place to protect the academic integrity and academic rigor of the programs in the state of Minnesota. That's another, that's something that we have talked about wanting to, to give credit for and had figured that out. So as you could attest to, how much work you do is on that and research and learning, there's this gives us that kind of flexibility, because MAPS is not something that all districts are doing, and that would be a really good example.
Favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Now for school board committee reports. Director Payne, AMSD.
AMSD met on September eighth. The executive director gave a report that included a lot of information on the situation with the SRO legislative language. We talked about the legislative platform survey that is coming out or is already out. I can't remember if it's not out yet, it's coming soon. In December, we'll vote on that legislative platform. So when you see that survey come, please fill that out. March fifth will be date of capital for AMSD, so you can put that on your calendar also. November ninth will be the AMSD conference, excellent conference to attend. It's all day. It'll be on student centered learning and artificial intelligence, an interesting combination of topics. He also gave an update on the Knowledge Burst projects, that there'll be two more focus groups receive funding for the Mini Apps Foundation. And there will be an opportunity, I know a little bit more than will share that school board, school board, student school board members are going to be invited to a conference through MSBA and Shakopee and then board, student board members will have the opportunity to give input on the barriers and encouragers to innovation in school. So I'm not sure the date of that conference yet, but it'll be down of the date yet, but it's coming. So watch for that invitation. Then for our presentation this month, past month, Morris Leatherman came and did their annual survey results. A couple of quick things from that, that currently, the majority of Minnesotans are feeling like we are moving in the right direction with our schools, which is great. And some of the trends, some of the things that were minor concern, that were minor, they're moving towards more of a concern. One is the teacher shortage. So we need to keep that in mind, that that will probably soon impact us more than it does. And lastly, the next meeting will be Not met yet, the next meeting is Monday, the twenty fifth.
MSBA, we just covered the process of the delegate assembly and Lucy, or Director Payne, is a delegate. So thank you for stepping up to do that. And I, they just completed the fall advocacy tour. I'm not sure if anyone was able to attend. But the thing I do want to point out is, even if you're not able to make, there are a lot of meetings and we receive a lot of emails from MSBA, but there are a lot of recordings and I think those, I find those really helpful because I can go at my own pace. So just want to point that out. And now for Director Payne, nine sixteen.
That on September sixth, we did the first read on several policies, four twenty five, five twenty six, six oh two and eight oh six. The superintendent report included a summary that Kim Gibbons did from Cary on the Read Act for member districts. Were you able to attend that, Barb? So that's great that we got a lot of additional help and support from them professionally for administrators and others. We had a staffing update. I'm happy to report the enrollment in nine sixteen is up five hundred students, which means the waiting lists there are getting shorter, which means they are finding teachers. We are still understaffed there, but it's coming along. We talked a lot about SROs because SROs have been pulled from the buildings in nine sixteen. And how that's being addressed. We recognized the retirement of a teacher or a staff member who's been there for thirty years. We approved the strategic action, the benchmarks for, for our strategic actions for this academic year. We approved the Century College Joint Powers Agreements for the CTE courses that generate college credits. So through that program, there's been seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty six thousand dollars in tuition savings for students across nine sixteen, which is great. We approved the home construction site for next year. It'll be the lot right next door, so the one they just did last year, which is great. And that house, I believe, is sold now. This year's house. We approved the sub rate or updated it for retired teachers. We approved policies in the five hundreds and then six twenty four. We have a board retreat coming up on September twenty seventh and a board meeting on October fourth. For more information, Leslie is forwarding you all the detailed pieces coming from nine sixteen as well.
Would it be worth noting to the public that our SROs aren't going anywhere and we do have security at football games?
Yes, I will, you, you've already, you know, I don't, I don't know. It's true. We do have our and Washington County will be at our football games. We've had, we have a very good partnership with Washington County. We continue to be supported and they have they continue to tell us that they support us and they will work with us. And so, so we are thankful for that partnership.
Second. Aye, are adjourned.